All right. You can start the meeting, Mr. Farnat.
Start your meeting.
All right, Charlie. Is Charlie with us?
He's supposed to be. I just called his home and his wife said that he was on, but maybe he's muted.
He shows up as on. He may have to unmute.
All right, let me, let me give his house a call.
He doesn't really have it, Jim.
Hi, Charlie.
Come on, Charlie.
Charlie, unmute. Unmute.
The button in the lower left-hand.
Whatever it is you're using, phone or computer. Hit unmute because you're not coming through. I can hear, I can hear Bill, I can hear Brett, I can hear Jack, can't hear you. Okay, you're not on then. Okay, and then go to un. Okay, and then go to unmute. Unmute, yes, when you get to that point when it says mute or unmute, you want to hit unmute. Okay, I'll be on the, I'll stay on the line with you. I guess not.
If worse comes to worse, he can always call in on the telephone too, Jim.
Okay, he said he never got to that point where it said unmute because I could hear you before and I tried to talk to you. Then all of a sudden I went, I hit one button, then all of a sudden it said mute unmute. So I guess that's the problem.
Yeah, it says join with computer or device audio. You have to click that button.
Or you can't hear anything on the cell phone. What Brett, what should he do to just call in to where?
I don't know where to call into, Brett.
Yep, let me, one second, I'll get you the number.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I could put my phone.
Charlie has the agenda.
Minutes to provide because of the short, the shortness of this type of agenda. And I don't have any agenda to distribute to you guys.
Oh, just, just. Okay, well, why don't you just go through so we can suspend the, the minutes of the previous meeting? And we can move on to your first item on, on the agenda, which we can deal with later.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is Strawberry Fields Estates, his 40B proposal. Bishop Hashem called me yesterday and requested a continuance to our 121720 meeting date. His engineer and beta group want to meet on site before they, before our next meeting.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we continue it until our December meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes.
The next item is notice of intent request from Diego Sylvia Silver, I'm sorry, 3239 Shoplot Road. To build a single family home on Montero Drive off William Street. The house is septic side, the 100-foot buffer. And SFG Associates was supposed to get on the meeting and, and speak to us. I don't know if he is on or not on.
Brett, is he? He's not on?
No.
I'm sitting in front of the computer. I don't, I don't think he's on.
No.
I don't see anybody else here except us.
No, he's not on, Charlie.
Okay, it's Brad Fitzgerald. I gave the information and he was, said he would try to present it. Maybe he thinks our meeting.
Wait a minute, Charlie, what's his name?
But the single family home is on lot three on Montero Drive. It's an old subdivision. With probably just two other lots left in development, two family subdivision. The septic system and the house outside of the 100-foot buffer.
Okay, so there's actually no need then really to, to go through us then.
Hey, Jim.
It's Montero Drive and it's just a short road off William Street.
Bill, you had a question for me?
Yeah, what's the guy's name? Nick?
What is the guy's name, Charlie, who was supposed to be online? SF? No, what, what's his name? Brad?
Brad Fitzgerald.
Brad Fitzgerald.
Oh, now there's a Nick Fens Dola.
Yes, that's me here.
Yeah, are you, are you the one with a, with a single family home?
No, I'm here just for a discussion topic for the Brook Street Solar Project.
Oh, all right.
Okay, that's next.
That's next, sorry about that.
Not a problem. Whenever you guys are ready, just let me know.
Yeah.
Okay, Charlie, go ahead, Charlie, with, with Montero Drive. Charlie? Go ahead with, with Montero Drive.
Okay. I just gave a description as a single family four-bedroom house with a septic behind the house. And everything that concerns us, the septic in the house are outside of the 100-foot zone.
Is this an NOI?
Yes, it's a notice of intent.
Okay.
What did he say? I didn't hear.
It's a notice of intent for a four-bedroom house on Montero Drive. Everything is outside of the buffer zone.
Right, good.
0170440.
Okay, can you hear that?
No, I did not.
Next to my iPad so you can listen in. Okay.
I can barely hear everybody talking, but when you repeat it, it works for me.
Okay, well, I got a big mouth. Okay, I move that we close the hearing and issue an order of conditions.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The next item is from Joe Mada III. He's requesting certificate of compliance for a house constructed on County Street. The driveway is in place, the house is up, the restoration area is done and planted. I talked with him recently and told him that he can't get a complete certificate of compliance until the restoration site is approved and that's going to be a year or so in the future. We have to determine whether all the plants survive and, and the restoration area is working properly. But he can't get a partial certificate of compliance and he's settled for that.
What's the, what's the house number on Elm?
Tony.
Yes, County Street.
Bill wants to know the host number.
I don't have the host number, but I have it on my computer, but my computer's gone.
Okay.
It's right next to, it's opposite of Cornfield. The farm where they have dwarf fruit trees, plants.
Okay. Okay, so that's on the west side of 138.
It's on the west side, yes.
Okay.
The houses septic are in and, and the grading has been done, the driveway is installed. They have the right to, they have. The only thing, the only question is the restoration area. It's made and it's planted.
Okay.
But whether the plant survived a year or so or the limit of the restoration requirements, I don't know. But I, I told the guy he can only get a partial certificate of compliance.
Well, let's.
As far as I could see, he's complied with our order of conditions.
Well, let's give him that partial then. So I'll make a motion that we issue a partial completion for his order of conditions.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The next is a request by Nick Fassendola and he's supposed to be on this meeting.
Someone is here. Is he the, the solar power?
Yes, I'm, I'm here. You guys ready for me?
Okay, he's talking to you now. Go ahead.
Sure, so for the record, Nick Fassendola. Yeah, over from, I'm from Level Design Group and I'm representing the developer of the Brook Street Solar Project. The project, if you guys are familiar, recall or were on the commission when it was originally approved a couple of years back. It's a ground-mounted solar facility located at the corner of Brook and Pine Streets. It's about a 10-acre solar development. And I don't know if anybody has control, if you could, if I could share my screen, I could pull up a plan showing what I'm like to talk about, but if not, I can.
Okay, I'm not getting any visuals on my iPad.
Yeah, it says I need the host to enable the screen sharing.
Okay. Bill, do you know how to do that?
I'm not getting any visual either, Jim.
Yeah, so he says it's up to you to do that. You have to hit something. So Brett's there, he could do it. If not, we'll just go without it. Now, you've got something to do with a culvert, so tell us about your culvert.
Sure, so the commission approved, so running along the front of the property within the Brook Street right-of-way is a narrow finger wetland that has an intermittent stream that runs through it. And the commission approved a culvert crossing that intermittent stream to provide access to the site. So essentially, the, the main driveway from the, from Brook Street has to cross this narrow wetland and intermittent stream to access the, the main part of the site. And there's actually a utility pole that was shown to be moved where the culvert is located. We've recently been in touch with National Grid on this and they said moving that utility pole is very unlikely. It has the, the main feed for Pine Street and I'm assuming you guys are familiar with the area. Brook Street to Pine Street's a hard 90-degree turn on that roadway.
Okay.
That pole has multiple guy wires that would also need to be relocated. And the utility company says that it's going to be a massive undertaking to move that pole out of the footprint, the approved footprint of the box culvert that's to be installed. So we are looking to shift the full culvert and culvert design up about 18 feet to clear that pole and guy wire. The channel width is very consistent. It's, it's a very narrow channel. It's only, it's essentially a glorified drainage ditch, which has turned into a wetland. And, you know, it's a couple of feet wide and there's a isolated bank wetland on either side of that. And, you know, it's very consistent width. So we would keep the same width of the channel, keep the same construction practices, but we would need to move it about 18 feet.
Okay.
To not impact that pole.
Okay, now have, have you, do you have any maps showing the relocation of it?
I do that I could share, I could send them out to you guys.
I can visualize that whole area and I, I understand what you're doing. And if we give you approval tonight, we would certainly, has Charlie received any maps on this?
So I haven't sent it to Charlie yet. And there's also another aspect I would like to discuss. This, this whole thing with the utility pole recently came up in the last two days. And it's, it's kind of trumped our original reason for wanting to be on the discussion. So along with moving the culvert, which had just recently come up to our attention in the last few days, I'd spoken to Charlie a week ago about installing, doing a temporary installation on the culvert so these guys could access the upland portion of it and start the clearing work. They've secured a site contractor and development firm and they've started the ordering process for the culvert as it's required to be constructed before they can even access the site without disturbing the remainder of the wetland. But that culvert's about 10 to 12 weeks out before it can be on site.
So Nick, we, we can't give, I'm, I'm not in favor of giving permission to move any culverts or anything, you know, without some verification from, from our own people.
Yes.
Well, that's what he's here for. Okay.
You know, we, we gotta, we gotta have our people look at some prints. We want to know exactly what, what you're going to do with the culvert, where it's going. And we, we need to see it.
No, I understand that. I was hoping to be able to display that tonight to the commission, but I, we, I understand the, the concerns. And I definitely have plans, which I'll send out to you guys tomorrow. But, you know, as far as the proposed, the general idea of, of the work is, is kind of what we would like to discuss tonight.
Okay, why don't you forward that? Why don't you forward that information, the map of the culvert change and the change to the culvert that you're going to make? And that way we could review it and act upon it at our next meeting.
Sure, and, you know, my, my, my goal tonight was to just essentially discuss it with the commission and have you guys render an opinion. Do you want something like a formal application? Or are you looking for plans to review? And then if you're okay with the, the minor changes, you know, you'd allow us to go forward with it in lieu of modifying the permit? That, that, that's kind of what I wanted.
Well, make, make an amendment, you know, or make it a, an adjustment to the original plan. And you're requesting approval to, to that adjustment. And then that would give us time to view the, your change and make sure you have everything that you want to do on it because it, it, it doesn't seem like it's going to be, you know, a horrendous change by any means. But yet we still want paperwork and, and written communication showing exactly what it's going to be.
I agree with that, Joe, Jeff.
No, I understood it. So I will, and this all came up very, you know, very quickly in the last week or so. So I apologize. I do appreciate you guys hearing me tonight to discuss this. So I will prepare a package with details, drawings, and a, and a letter explaining what we're looking to do. And I'll get that over to you guys.
Very good.
And, yeah, and then we can discuss it further at your next scheduled meeting if you want to get us on the agenda as another discussion topic. We can, we'd be more than happy to, to, to discuss it then.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Charlie?
Yes, I can add with audio. I don't know if it's.
We, we only have audio. No one has.
I agree with, with your suggestion, Jeff.
Okay, so, well, we're just going to wait. We're not, we don't have to make any motion. We don't have to do anything. We're just going to wait until the new paperwork comes in and then we can, then we can act upon it next month.
Yes.
Okay. Let's go to the next item, Charlie.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
The next item is applicants for the Conservation Commission agent. We have five applicants. Leonard Vieira, Leon Edwards, Samuel Collins, Nikki Mutt, I think it's Nara. And Lisa Caladonia. Nikki is a graduate, or is going to be a graduate from Bridgewater State College this December. She has no experience. This would be her first job. Leonard Vieira is an analytical chemist at Moderna Therapeutics in Owen, Mass. Has a BS in biology and no wetland experience. Leon Edwards is an analytic chemist, has a BS in biology and, and works at Moderna. Am I going over this again? Oh, I'm going twice. He's an analytic chemist, okay. And he has no wetland experience. That's Edwards and Vieira. Samuel Collins has a BS in atmospheric science, BS in meteorology and no wetland experience. And the last and best is Lisa Caladonia, former agent. She has 20 years of experience in wetland protection as an environmental consultant. That's it.
Okay. Karen Brady and, and Todd Pilling and myself will interview these, these five applicants. And we'll let you know how we make out. I will discuss it with you guys before I make any kind of decision.
Okay, now I have been to town hall before it was closed and I was able to read all the applications. And I think what Charlie gave to us as a brief synopsis is most accurate. So I'm just going to leave it at that. Who has experience and who hasn't had any? And then we'll, then we'll go from there after you three, Bill. Bill, Todd, and Karen, do your interviews. I'm sorry?
I said, how is Todd involved in?
Bill, do you, can you answer that?
I can't hear him.
How is Todd part of this interview?
How is Chad?
Todd? Todd Pilling, she's, you said he was going to be part of the interview process.
Yes, absolutely.
How did he become part of it and not just the commission?
I, I think, Jim, I think he's the most qualified. He's more qualified than anybody on the commission.
I, I agree, he is a qualified person, but how did he get selected as opposed to the commission doing the interview by itself?
That's kind of hard to answer. I, I wish, I wish you hadn't brought it up, Jim, but.
Well, Charlie brought it up. I'm just, I'm just conveying because you can't hear him.
Okay. Who's Brad Fitzgerald just popped up on the screen?
I'm here for Montero Drive at 7:30.
Ah, we have video now.
Yeah, we, no, I got, we got visual.
Visual. It's gone.
I'm still here.
Did you say Montero Drive, Brad?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Charlie and, and Jim and Jack, did you, did, did you guys hear this, Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes, we did. And I saw him with his flag in the background and his fireplace.
Okay.
And I, and actually, I think we did yours already. If you want to hang out there and we can tell you more.
Sure, I, I thought I was on at 7:30.
Okay, Charlie, you want to tell Brett the results of our findings for his Montero Drive?
We voted unanimously to, to approve an order of conditions for the project.
Great.
You're completely out of the wetlands for, for, for this project as far as septic and housing, correct?
I'm sorry, what was that again?
You are out of the buffer zone for this entire project that you're working on.
Yeah, the only thing that's within the project is the finished grading for the septic system, but the septic itself is 102 feet from the edge of the wetlands.
Okay.
Which meets your, your requirement of 100 feet plus.
And so Charlie will, because you're, because you're going to do a tiny bit of grading there, he will write that in as far as what you can and cannot do in that, let's say, that last 10 feet of the buffer zone.
Right.
So, okay, so I guess you're all set.
Okay, well, thank you very much. That was nice and quick. I wish.
Have a good day. Be safe.
Thank you, you too. Good night.
Good night.
Anything else, Charlie?
Yeah, I want to get back to this agent. Is this going to be a joint agent or is it going to be an agent for the Conservation Commission?
Bill, did you hear him?
No, I can't hear anything Charlie says.
Okay, he said, is this agent going to be just for conservation or is it going to be a joint agent with another department?
Eventually, it'll be a joint agent. Eventually.
So right now we got 25 hours, correct?
We got what?
We're going to have an agent 25 hours a week.
Yes.
When, when is she going to be approved for the stormwater commission?
Charlie asked, when is she going to be approved for the stormwater commission? Bill?
Wait, yeah, the selectmen did not want to start a new, a, a new job. They didn't, they wanted it. They just wanted to redo, they wanted to renew the old job that we had when we had a stormwater, when we had a conservation agent. They, they didn't want to create a new position. So we eliminated the stormwater part of, of the application. But eventually, this, whoever we decide is going to be our conservation agent will somehow be working eventually with the stormwater people.
Well, why don't we approve the agent tonight?
Okay, Charlie's, Charlie says, why don't we approve the agent tonight?
We can't approve the agent. We've got to review, we've got to interview all them people. Every, every applicant has to be interviewed.
Okay, each applicant, Charlie, each applicant has to be interviewed and that has not been done yet. So in a, in a matter of fairness, that has to be done and the town has to vote funding in for this position.
Well, I think that we can still pass on our, our opinion to the interviewers.
Charlie said he wants to pass on our. Charlie said he wants to pass on our opinions to the interviewers.
Well, he certainly can.
At a public hearing or in private?
At a public hearing.
At a public hearing he wants.
I had a quick question, who's doing the, this is Kevin Bernato. I had some technical difficulties, sorry. Who's doing the interviews for that position?
Bill?
This is Kevin?
Yeah, I apologize, I had some technical difficulties.
Oh, that's okay, Kevin, I'm glad to see you here.
Thank you, so my question was, who's doing the interview for this new position?
Karen Brady, Todd Pilling, and myself.
Okay.
That's the way it was set up by the Board of Selectmen.
But that makes sense, that's good.
Okay, Charlie, so it was the Board of Selectmen to answer your question a few minutes ago about how did those three get selected? The selectmen took that position.
Well, the email that I received from Leanne said that they were applicants for for the Conservation Commission, that's all it said. And I was assuming that if it's on our agenda, we should have some some kind of opinion or reach some kind of decision as to who we think is the best applicant.
Charlie, right now, I know I have read all the applicants. You have read them. I have my opinion as to who I think is best fit, but do we also, maybe the interview would change things with the three interviewers, I don't know. I don't know. Or, you know, based upon the application only and their resume, I already have a strong opinion.
Well, I've got a very strong opinion. We have one that has no experience and hasn't graduated yet. And three others that have BSs in Biology, Analytic Chemistry, and Atmospheric Science.
And no Wetland experience. None. There is only one applicant that has experience in wetlands.
And she also has Stormwater experience as well.
Well, I think Bill knows where you and I are heading, so maybe we can just leave it at that.
It'd be legal. You have to interview every applicant. You have to ask them the same questions. And that's how the interview has to go. It's gotta be done legally.
Okay, so. Okay, you got that, right, Bill?
What?
You heard.
I can't hear anything Charlie says.
Charlie's recommendation that it's Lisa Caladonia.
All right. I'll write that down. Charlie likes Lisa.
Okay, likewise.
Oh, you too, all right.
Yeah, put me down straight.
But these people filled out an application and sent it in.
That's right.
And where?
If they can convince you.
And we have to interview each one of them and ask them the same questions and make a decision on that.
Okay, Bill, if they during the interview can convince you that they have strong experiences in the field, then that is going to alter your opinions and maybe disregard ours. But until that happens, we had our opinions.
That's correct.
Okay. Anything else, Charlie? Charlie?
Come on, Charlie.
Uh-oh, I don't know if I lost him.
We still have Jack?
Yeah. Wait, I'm ringing him up again, I might have touched something or he touched something on his phone. I'm ringing it again.
Can you hear me, Bill?
Okay, I don't know what happened.
Yeah, I heard you, Jack.
We're back on, we're back on, Charlie.
We need a motion to adjourn, there's something else on the agenda.
Okay, I make a motion to adjourn and I don't.
Wait, 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 Jim, slow down.
Go ahead.
You have to explain to Charlie and Jack and Kevin about the tree stand situation.
I don't know what happened on that after, you and I took a walk there, we saw some trees that were cut. I know that the environmental police were there, but I don't know what happened beyond that date, Bill.
Well, you wrote up something that you thought we could adopt.
Okay, Charlie, do you have that paper that I gave to you? No, that's okay, you can still because I'm looking through here and I don't see it in my folder.
What do we got, issues with tree stands on conservation land?
That's correct, Jack.
You have it, Charlie?
Hey, Jack?
Down Conservation Commission.
Yes, Bill?
A young fellow put up a tree stand and he cut a bunch of trees and he cut cut a trail into the stand. He cut trails away from the stand west, south, and north. We had the conservation agent, not the conservation agent, but the
Environmental police.
Environmental police officer, go down there and tell him that any tree stand that you put up anywhere, you need written permission. And he was to remove the stand, we never got any response from him. Environmental police officer told him to call the Conservation Commission to get permission, he never he's never contacted us. Jim and I went to his house and talked to his mother and we kinda we kinda got pushed out.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so we need to adopt some sort of a we need to adopt something that people need to get written permission from somebody on the commission.
Charlie found the paperwork that I gave him, my draft.
I couldn't hear you, Charlie.
Wait a minute, a little bit louder, Charlie. Okay, did you hear that?
None, none of it.
Okay, I tried to put my phone as close as possible to the iPad for you to hear it. And I don't know what happened, but it's okay, it essentially says, no putting in nails or screws or anything into the tree. You can't cut trees, you can only trim a few branches to install your stand and that the stand must be removed at the conclusion of said year's hunting season. So it would require yearly permission. So Charlie can take, he can look it over, type it up and have a preview for us. We won't get it done this year.
We gotta get it done this year, we gotta get it done right now.
Okay, then, Charlie, could you hear that? Bill wants it done, if you get a copy done and then Bill goes over and picks it up and then he could run, you know, 20, 30 copies of it off at the Town Hall if he can get in there. Employee, yeah, we're employees. So I guess we can go in. Then you can have the copies, Bill. How's that sound?
Okay, but we need to approve, you know, we need to approve some sort of a some kind of a document that says that, I wish to heck we could see. How come I could see Fitzgerald on the Montana thing and I can't on the Montero Drive and I can't see you, none of you guys?
Well, there's something there, I don't know who said it. See, all I get is record and I got
Yeah, you just have to hit your camera though, that's all you have to do. It says stop video.
What do you have to do, Kevin?
Hit stop video. Can you see me?
No.
No, hang on.
Oh, I did.
Hey, there you are.
There you guys. So it says on the bottom there.
I did, I got it.
I got you.
And the only reason I kept it off is because everybody else had it as off.
Yeah, get back a little bit, you're too close, Kevin.
Okay.
Oh, I see you, Bill.
How's that?
I see Kevin and I see me.
There you go, see? Now to share.
I don't have anything on my screen. I see you guys, but there's nothing there for me to start a video.
Don't confuse me, two guys talking together, I can't hear either one.
No, I'm using an iPad, Kevin.
Okay, so are we. Kevin?
On the bottom, it should say start video.
Nope.
Then near your name, there's a little camera where it says participants.
It has my name.
All right, see the camera that has an X through it or a line through it, hit that.
I just did something there and it stretched out and I see you, I see Bill. For Jack, I got nothing and for me, I got nothing.
Yeah, that's because I don't run a computer, I'm just sitting here talking on it.
Okay, Jack.
Wait a minute, let's see if I got a camera here. Is there something there now?
Nope.
So.
Okay, I've got a camera in the corner now.
It should be on the bottom there, mute, it says mute and then it says stop video. Well. Anyway, Mr. Chairman, if I could, there's a way that you can share a document. Whoever's the host, I believe it's Jack's the host.
Yeah.
If he lets someone else like Charlie share a video.
All right, let's do somebody else because we can't hear Charlie.
So this way you can actually see what you want to approve on that document.
Yeah.
That's probably the only way unless he holds it up to the screen.
But he doesn't, Charlie's not online, he's working through my phone. I have my phone next to the iPad.
Oh.
All right, Jim, I thought you had something already written up, you read it.
I did, Charlie has it. Charlie, why don't you read it off to me, sentence by sentence, and I will read it to them.
That's Jim, I think.
Okay, listen up, folks. Go ahead.
The Conservation Commission gives permission to blank to install a tree stand on this property at blank for the purpose of hunting.
Okay, could you hear that, anybody?
Yes, I did.
I heard it.
Conservation Commission grants permission to blank to install a tree stand for the purpose of hunting at said location, blank location. Okay, go ahead.
No tree cutting is permitted, only trimming of branches for the installation of the stand.
Can you hear that?
Yes, I did.
Yes.
Okay, they're hearing it, go ahead, continue.
No nails, bolts, or other implements may be driven into the tree for the installation.
Continue.
This stand will be removed at the conclusion of the blank year hunting season. Conservation Commission, sign.
Okay, so it's good for one year. They have to apply every year and tell us where the stand is gonna be.
Show us where the stand is gonna be.
Yeah, or tell us, you know. Now, that comes for the most part right out of the hunting manual as far as the nails and the screws and other implements. That comes right out of the hunting manual.
The state abstracts.
Do they have the name on the stand?
Yep, name and phone, well, name, yeah, but we need name and phone number.
Okay, did you hear that, Charlie? We need name and phone number on the, on that application.
On the stand.
On the stand.
No, on the application, you don't need to put it on the stand.
Will the person's name. Yeah. You can do it on the application and put the, they need the name on the stand. We'll have the, I don't think the phone number on the stand would be the best because people might be just calling them.
Right.
If we have.
On the application is the only thing we need the phone number for.
Yeah, the identification on the stand and then we have his phone number on the application.
Right.
Okay, Charlie? Is that everything we need?
Okay.
Okay, I move that we accept the oh, let's see, I gotta, give me a moment while I figure out what I wanna say here. Or someone else can chime in.
Come on, Kevin, help Jim.
I'm not a voting member, so I can't really.
Yes, you can.
Well, you can still come up with something. No, I can make the motion, but he can help me with the, okay.
With the wording.
Yeah.
I made a motion that we we develop a tree stand hunting application with permission to hunt.
I'll second that.
On conservation property.
On conservation property, Charlie. It's been, motion made and seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
You can see him?
I can see Charlie, but I can't read his lips because his face is too low.
Well, how did you get on, I'm on here, I see, but they can't see me.
Yeah, it's something with your video, maybe it's faced the wrong way, could face it towards you.
Maybe it's divine intervention.
Can you see me now?
You sound like a telephone commercial.
Well, I just turned it around backwards.
I don't know. Something, you're not hitting just probably one button, like, I don't know.
But I can see, I can see Charlie, I can see Bill, I can see you.
I can't see Charlie. We'll figure it out.
No, we're doing good.
Switch the guy.
Charlie, do you have anything else on the agenda?
Anything else, Charlie? Anything else, Charlie? Adjournment, he said.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn if that's what you guys, if we're done.
So I make a motion, we adjourn?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, push some buttons, get rid of the faces on my computer here.
All you have to do is hit the X. Nice to see you guys again, be safe.
See you later, Jack, be safe.
Yeah.
Take care, guys.